Ms. Trimmie will do the prayer and then follow with the pledge. Ms. Trimmie?
Mr. President, before I have the prayer, I would like to ask for a moment of silent prayer for Hector Sami-Gale, for Cynthia, for their family, and just lift them up. Thank you. Our most humble and gracious Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, humbled, and with your guidance, we look forward to working through the times that we are in today. Bless each one of our staff, bless each one of us as police jurors that are asked to lead this parish into the right directions. Give us your guidance and give us all the fruits of the Spirit that you put in there, in the Bible for us to read, kindness and gentleness and self-control and patience, which is one of the hardest ones for all of us. So, all of the fruits, dear Lord, please lay on us that we may move forward and do what's best for the citizens of Calcasieu Parish as a whole. Be with each one of us tonight as we go through this meeting, be with each one of our staff members, be with each one that is here tonight. And thank you, dear Lord, for all the blessings that you have bestowed on us. We humbly accept them. We open our hearts to you because the Christ in each one of us loves the Christ in everyone else. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Here.
Mr. Brane.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Fornum.
Here.
Mrs. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Guidry.
Here.
Mr. Hassan.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Present.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Spell.
Here.
Mr. Stelly, is unable to attend, he's out of town this evening. Mr. Seis.
Present.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
And President McMillan.
Here.
You do have a call.
If anyone in the audience would like to speak on the item, on tonight's agenda, if you fill out one of these blue slips and bring it up front, you'll be able to do that. Also, if you have a cellphone or pager, we'd ask that you'd sign off those at this time. Item five, in accordance with election laws and procedures, the following action must be taken at 5:30. Item five is consideration adopting the process of verbal resolution promulgation on the results of election held on November 14, 2009, with the authority not to issue not exceeding $55 million of 20-year public improvement bonds for construction renovation, restoration, additions, courthouse, complex, Calcasieu Parish Correctional Institute, and a complex also levy, collect 10-year maintenance tax beginning January 1, 2010, and ending December 31, 2019, for the purpose of maintaining operating the parish courthouse. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
I had a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Fornum, on the promulgation of the results of the election. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item five carries. Item six, take appropriate action application for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Vickers?
Mr. President, we have five applications tonight before you recommend that they be approved.
Move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Guidry on item six. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item six carries. Item seven, consideration approving the minutes of the regular meeting of police jury dated October 22, 2009. Got a motion by Mr. Seis and a second by Mr. Brane. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item seven carries. Item eight is consideration adopting a resolution approving a recovery proposal for the utilization of the CDBG disaster recovery funds related to Gustav Ike in accordance with the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the police jury and the state of Louisiana Division Administration of Office of Community Development Disaster Recovery Unit approved in April 2009.
Move on eight.
Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Collins, and we do have some discussion on item eight. At this time, Claire or Brian? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, Claire's coming up. This is the plan that you got the initial draft of on October 22. The last 21 days plus has been a review period as required by the state. So, this is for final approval and submitted to the state. And Claire will cover, there haven't really been many changes, but a few changes since that point, and we'll just go from there and afterwards. I do have a little bit more to add.
And Claire, if you would tell the folks your name and your job position here at the parish.
My name is Claire Thompson. I'm Senior Grants Planner in Planning and Development. I'll be very brief. This plan is very much like the last draft that you saw. I'll bring your attention to the allocation proposal, which is on page 15 of the document you have before you. I've also made some available at the back table where the agendas are as well. In recent conversations with the LRA, they requested that rather than having a separate allocation that would show consultant fee estimates, that those be sort of ground into each project cost. So, that's been the only change. If you'll notice on this page, you've got an asterisk at the end of that line for fees for consultants utilized in projects. And then if you see at the bottom of the page, those have been worked in, obviously, to each project cost. And so, that's really the only change that you'll see. This proposal, should you choose to adopt it, will be submitted to the state on Monday. And I'd like to mention, too, that this proportion, this proposal portion is simply the list of projects as the LRA required them in template form. The entire proposal, which will be made available online, you'll see this online tonight, and then on Monday, the entire package, which includes signatures for those who attended citizen participation meetings, that kind of thing. That entire package with all public comment will be made available online as well.
Is there any questions for Claire at this time? Mr. Bean?
I just wanted to mention, in addition to that, we received from the state in the last two days, a copy of a letter submitted by Mayor Roach to the LRA officially requesting they be authorized to participate directly with the LRA to administer a housing compensation program, which is what he did discuss in some of the meetings with the ad hoc group. He made an official request on the 17th, and I believe that was at the LRA's request that they get something official from him.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bean? I would like to recognize in our audience Mayor Benton, Kenny Stinson. Kenny, thank you for being here. And at this time, I'd like to call on item eight to the microphone, City Councilman John Iew, if he has a presentation or a few words he'd like to say on item eight. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mr. President.
State your name and address for the record.
John Iew, 2018, Charvet Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana. And on behalf of the Lake Charles City Council and Mayor Randy Roach, I want to thank you for allowing me to say a few words regarding the Calcasieu Parish Gustav Ike CDBG fund allocation. Within Calcasieu Parish, Lake Charles sustained 35% of the total damage caused by these two storms, and most of that damage was suffered in the district that I represent. In September, the Lake Charles City Council voted in favor of a resolution that basically requested that the police jury consider allowing Lake Charles to use a portion of the allocated funds to be available for housing programs for Lake Charles residents whose homes were affected by these storms. I realize that this debate has been ongoing in an ad hoc committee, advisory committee, and I'm not here tonight to continue that debate. I'm just simply here to request that the police jury consider letting the city of Lake Charles use a portion of the funds that are already allocated to Lake Charles to be available for a housing compensation program, a housing program that would allow qualified homeowners to be reimbursed for uninsured losses, which the council feels would provide additional resources and incentive for individual homeowners to repair or rebuild their damaged property. As stated in the resolutions, very difficult to pinpoint the extent of the need in our area or how many people would actually qualify. However, we felt that it was important to us as a council to at least offer it as an option to the citizens of Lake Charles. And I'm here today to ask you to please vote to make it available as an option to our citizens of Lake Charles. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Iew, any questions? Mr. Iew at this time? Thank you very much. I'd like to call to, on item eight, Mr. Bill Sherman. Sherman, if you would, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bill Sherman. I live at 13 River Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, thank you for your time. I will also be brief. I'm here representing the YMCA at 618 Kirby Street. Very briefly, the roof was damaged after Hurricane Rita. I know I'm a storm too late this evening, but I wanted to bring you up to speed. We have made the building secure. We have a business plan, which I have tonight. I know these funds are primarily dedicated to the last storm. I feel strongly that this YMCA, the only YMCA in the parish, is a parish-wide entity and that all six municipalities would enjoy the fruition, the fruits, if you will, if we were able to restore that building. I speak specifically tonight to the off-the-top, the remainder from the off-the-top allocations, both to the parish and to the city of Lake Charles. If, as I understand, this recovery fund funding, the six municipalities and the jury will decide what happens, and it looks like most of these funds are dedicated to infrastructure, restoring our building would be a great boon to the whole parish. And I would be available for any questions from members of the juries about this.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Oh, Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have any idea, dollar and cent wise, what you would be asking for?
Yes, sir. I think with $1.5 million, we could open the first floor and make it habitable and to city code.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call Claire or maybe Brian, if you could answer, is this an eligible request on this Ike Gustav bunny? Is it something, maybe Claire, if you could come up and let us know on that behalf?
My answer would be that I would defer to the LRA to help me with eligibility requirements. And in terms of Gustav and Ike, we would like to see the projects focus on those two storms. But again, I can definitely meet with LRA again about this issue and if you'd like, get an additional answer.
And I think, Mr. Sherman, if you stay there just a second, Claire, in visiting with Paul Rainwater with the LRA, there are opportunities for other money out there that we could possibly help the YMCA. I think everybody at this table knows how important the YMCA is to all southwest Louisiana. And having a tremendous staff and grant writers like Brian and like Claire to help us with that, it could be something that if it's not in this 17.7 million that we could go to the LRA with, with a resolution probably on behalf of this jury to do something, to try to get that $1.5 million to help you rebuild that project. But it will take us a little time to get that type of information back. I do have some other jurors with some other questions. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sherman, was the building not insured or what has got you all in this position?
Yes, sir, and that's a good question, Mr. Landry. The building was insured. The problem was mismanagement after Hurricane Rita. The building wasn't secured almost immediately. Some of the funds, to be diplomatic, went away. National YMCA came in and fired the management. We have a new manager, very young, bright, young woman. We did find enough funding to fix the roof and secure the building, but it's been without electricity almost from the period of Rita.
So, it did have insurance. The insurance company paid. There was some mismanagement, and the money kind of is gone, I guess, is what you're saying, and now you don't have enough to fix it?
No, sir. We have some money. We have three people on staff, and we are running programs. But yes, sir, the answer to your question is, we do not have enough money to restore the building.
But originally, you did? I mean, it would have been enough with whatever the insurance company had paid or?
Mr. Landry, I wasn't on the board at the time of the storm. As a matter of fact, I didn't even work in Lake Charles, so I'm sort of new to the scene. I don't know if there was enough insurance proceeds to recover the building.
And I, you know, I've heard part of this story has been told to me, but I don't know that I got told the facts. And I've often wondered, I go to the post office and the building's still closed, and of course, you aren't able to have the public go there any longer. I think Mr. Smith has indicated that he can add some.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some information on that. There was a lawsuit between the board of the YMCA and its insurance company. The insurance company contended that most of the damage pre-existed and was from poor maintenance, et cetera, refused to pay. I actually served as a mediator on that case, and we got it mediated, and there was a settlement, but the sums that were finally received were inadequate to restore the building. The sums received could have been used to do the roof and to secure it, but unfortunately, thereafter, a lot of those funds were misappropriated, is what I understand. They did have enough money to do the repairs to secure it, but that pretty much, I think they only got $600 and some odd thousand, as I recall, in the settlement. So, that's just information I just happened to have.
Okay, thank you. Have y'all checked, I mean, would it be cheaper to build it somewhere else? I mean, to start over and tear the building down or no?
Mr. Landry, we have consulted with Jeff Cutler, a local architect, for about the past six months, and Jeff says no. The YMCA has no debt. In addition, the land really couldn't have been more prominently featured in terms of the location. To build a pool, to build a gym, to build all the things that the 36,000 square feet entail would be a much larger sum than we're trying to raise.
Okay.
No is the short answer to your question.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm all for trying to help you. I don't know if this is where it would come from, but I'm definitely willing to look at, you know, whatever it's going to take to hopefully get you on your feet.
And President McMillan is right. I've met with Paul Rainwater at length, and because of the nature of our damage, Paul has been very receptive to that conversation and in hopes that something can be done. I'm here tonight just to get in line.
You gotta get in line or you're not gonna get it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sherman, I applaud your effort in trying to get this building back up and operational. For a lot of young kids, I think that's a place where a lot of kids can go and just kind of find some kind of identity as to, you know, what they can do in life and who they can, you know, become. Are there any other entities besides what you've mentioned with the money that you guys have received from legal counsel, Mr. Smith mentioned, for the $1.5 million? Is there any other entities that have come forth in wanting to give money and help in this project that you know of?
Mr. Guidry, that's a good question. We have just started the capital campaign to try and generate private funding to put the building back together. I've been following this particular LRA funding since I first read about it. I don't know if I've answered your question.
I was just wanting to know, how close would you have to be to possibly getting it up and open again, to where, to meet this $1.5 million that you say would probably just do the first floor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Any other discussion for Mr. Sherman? Mr. Brane?
Bill, what was on the second floor originally?
Mr. Brane, the gym is up there. There was a weight room, the administrative offices were up there. In order to come to code, Mr. Cutler said we'd have to install an elevator, which is a pricey kind of a thing. And if we're gonna redo the building, we want to do it right. I don't particularly like the term "state of the art" because it envisions castles and things like that. We don't want a castle. We just want a functional building.
Thank you. And, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Sherman, is there a number that would get y'all started? Like, right now, you could actually, with $300,000, actually start work there? A hundred thousand, do something? I mean, is there anything that's a small ticket that would actually progress it along?
Yes. If we could get $500,000, we could rewire it and have power to the building, which would solve a lot of problems. The building will be, the building isn't, but it's going to be blighted if it stands vacant really much longer.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion by any other jurors? Thank you, Mr. Sherman. We appreciate it. I feel like our staff, Brian, I maybe would throw that to you to work with him on his behalf. Would you like to make a comment on that?
Yes, we will certainly look at other avenues that could be available and report back to you, you know, as soon as we learn more from the LRA.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. In closing, Ms. Thompson has been very helpful. Thank you all. Thank you very much. All right, on item eight, we had a motion and a second. We had Mr. Iew come up and discuss on the behalf of what he felt the city of Lake Charles, and we didn't have any discussion from any jurors at that point. I think that we, as a committee, have put a lot of hours in on this project. We've worked real hard with all the mayors, and we understand that sometimes we just have to possibly agree to disagree. And we have heard what the city of Lake Charles is asking, but I think as we put this to a vote, this jury can vote its conscience on what they would say. I have a motion as second. Is there any objection to the resolution approving recovery proposal, as said? Any discussion? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, thank you, Mr. Iew, for being here tonight. Yes, sir. Or thank you, thank you very much.
He's much better.
I'm sorry, I couldn't help it. Item nine, consideration adopting resolution of support endorsing the Calcasieu Council on Aging and CCOA.
Move.
To the Louisiana Recovery Authority for the CCOA's application for competitive affordable rental funds through the state of Louisiana Ike Gustav Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program in order to construct housing development for the elderly. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Guidry on item number 10. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Item number nine. Any objection? Hearing none, item nine carries. Item 10, take appropriate action on STO 4-01-09, which requests by the police jury to conduct feasibility studies reclassifying certain tracts of land south of the intercoastal along either side of Highway 27 from A1 agriculture to I2 heavy industry planning and zoning. Voted unanimously to recommend the properties be reclassified from A1 to I2. Got a motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Hassan on item 10. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 10 carries. Item 11, consideration adopting indication objection? No objection to the following proposed projects.
All bullets.
By the Corps of Engineers. I got a motion by Mr. Griffin on item 11, all bullets, second by Mr. Guidry. Bullet 11.1, 11.1, proposal gravity drainage, Ward 6 and Ward 5 to conduct maintenance dredging operation, remove approximately 15,000 cubic yards of vegetation debris and accumulation of silt from existing drainage lateral. 11.2, proposal of Chevron Pipeline Company dispose approximately 484 cubic yards of rock rip raft, construct a 335 linear feet, six-foot-tall crown levee. I have a motion and a second on item 11 and all bullets. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 11, all bullets passes. Item 12, consideration adopting resolution authorizing the purchase of the property located at 1001 Melanie Street in Sulphur through the funding received from FEMA, severe repetitive loss grant program to mitigate houses that have flooded numerous times. Move on 12.
1001 Melanie Street.
I got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Fornum on item 12.
Could be 1,001.
1,001, that'd be good. Could do that.
However you want to do it.
Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 12 carries. Item 13, just consideration of amending the ordinance with references to surplus adjudicated properties. Amendment 13.1 is to amend ordinance 5546, which allows Mr. Charles Strong to purchase the following described property for $1,800. That's APO 3-475-08, 13.2. The deadline for completion of that sale described property above is March 31, 2010. 13.2 is ordinance 5530, which allows Sonia Petroleum to buy property for $900. APO 3-458-08, deadline to March 31, 2010. 13.3, amend the ordinance 5354, which allows Gilda Marie Jones to purchase the following property for $7,800. APO 4-416-07, deadline of that would be August 31, 2010. 13.4, ordinance number 5706, adopted on September 17, which allowed the extension of the ordinance 5564, adopted on September 4, 2008, which allowed Union Zion Baptist Church to purchase described property for $1,000, which is APO 3-488-08, and that deadline also will be March 31, 2010. Is there any discussion on 13 and all bullets? Mr. Seis?
Trimmie, is there any reason why 13.3 had a different deadline than the other ones? Yes, sir. This lady has put up the escrow, but she just cannot complete the sale, but she can have the money. She asked for additional time, and we thought it would be best to go ahead, since she's already put up her escrow money, to try to work with her to get the sale completed. And so, she just needed more time.
Okay. I had a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Ms. Griffin. Any other discussion on 13 and all bullets? Hearing none, 13 carries. Item 14 is consideration adopting a resolution approving extension of employment agreement between the parish administrator for additional period of January 1, 2010 through April 3, 2010, further authorizing the parish and another police jury to sign all documents related there, too. I got a motion by Dr. Mackey and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont on 14. Mr. Andrew Pont?
I would like, I don't know if I'm inappropriate by asking at this time, I'd like to know where we are on the issue that I brought up two weeks ago.
Well, and this is where, after some discussions with my fellow jurors and with the administrative liaison group and our administrator currently, basically, we had the tax election last weekend, and we had a pretty busy week going on through this week. What we're gonna do is extend this contract if this jury sees fit, and that way, we will have time to, right after this meeting tonight, once we have the extension, to set up the meetings to do a search for our new parish administrator with the administrative liaison group, leading that, bringing a criteria back to this jury, to let this jury know exactly how we're gonna look at trying to do this in a very open, very public forum-type situation that will have input from all the police jurors that sit on this, as well as the community input that will be given to the jurors on that behalf to make the best proper selection. We all understand, this is gonna be one of the most major decisions we make as a police jury during our elected cycle, and we want to make sure we get the right guy to lead Calcasieu Parish into the future. So, we are taking this very seriously, and we are gonna work very hard on this project, and it is gonna be a very open project, that we make sure that everyone is well-informed and they understand the criteria that we're going through, and every juror will have their input on this. Liaison group will make these recommendations, bring it back to this jury, and then we'll move forward with that on that behalf. But the first kind of domino that had to fall is this extension to give us time to really get this moving forward. So, with that being said, Mr. Andrew Pont?
Do you have a timeline just for?
Soon as we get this done, we can have a meeting just anytime next week with that liaison group. Also, I'd like to mention that...
Well, next week's Thanksgiving week. I'll give you some leverage.
You'll give me till after Thanksgiving? I'd also like to mention that this liaison, administrative liaison group, I'd like to call the names on who these folks are. Ms. Elizabeth Griffin, Ellis Hassan, Dr. Mackey, myself, Tony Stelly, Mark McMurray, and we did add Guy Brane and Calvin Collins are the administrative liaison group that will be meeting to formulate how we're gonna move forward with this. This is the first time we've had to do this in 30 years, so it is some uncharted ground. We understand that, and we will be in the utmost openness and professionalism of any group that we've ever had, and I look forward for everybody's input on this to make everything right, to make sure no stone is unturned. With that being said, we do have a speaker on this. With that being said, we do have a speaker on this. Mr. Atherton, if you'd come to the microphone. Do we have a motion to second on 14? Yes, we got a motion to second.
Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street, Suffolk, Louisiana. I just simply want to thank you for moving your process forward, for the action you're taking tonight, moving forward, and just simply stress the importance, what you just said, that it's important that the process be recognized as credible, not only by the public, but by the employees, other public entities, other public agencies, and that sort of thing. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Any other discussion by any other jurors on item 14? I have a motion to second. Yes, Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope I didn't miss it, but you are gonna call a meeting respectively after Thanksgiving?
Yes, ma'am.
Which would be the first week of next month or the last week in November?
It could be the last week in November. Be fine with me. We'll just pick a date. We'll get the group together. I'll get help with our staff and make sure we do that. We're probably gonna do it on a...
So it'll be the first week in December?
First week in December. Yes, ma'am.
The first is on a Tuesday, so then we'll get something done within that.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll try to make it on a Tuesday so we could have a report on it Thursday night to let this jury be informed on exactly where we're at. Mr. Seis?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Mr. Seis?
And so are you saying that you are the chair of that committee?
Yes. Yes, as president, I will set as chair on this committee, but a group. It's not a committee. It's a group. It's a group. That the, I will be chairing this group so we can have all the input from each juror. Any other questions? Any objections? Hearing none. Item 14 carries. Item 15. Consideration adopting resolution approving renewal of the contract between the police jury and Solution Employment Assistance Program, that's EAP, to continue counseling and case management services, training workshops, substance abuse services for parish employees, eligible family members for the period of January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2011, and an option to renew for additional year. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Bream on item 15. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 15 carries. Also, going back to 14, I'd like to say, Mr. McMurray, congratulations on your added three months with this contract. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that was at 50% of original salary, wasn't it?
Item 16. Consideration adopting resolution approving amendment to the contract for engineering services for stormwater master planning between the police jury and CF Festemaker and Associates for Stormwater Master Planning Ward 1 Basin to include engineering services for Shoe Peak Sulphur Basin. Got a motion by Mr. Fornum, second by Mr. Collins. Mr. President, any objection? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item 17. Consideration... Question. Master planning of the basin.
No, Mr. President, I was, I actually had a very legitimate question towards the subject of the agenda item.
I could look up for a minute. I'm sorry.
Completely understand. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, Shoe Peak Sulphur Basin, is this the same item that was discussed as part of the core presentation? Mr. Wainwright?
Yes, sir, Mr. Spell.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright.
Waiting to be recognized by the president. This is an extension of those studies, Mr. Spell. Those core studies started the modeling from what would be Calcasieu River and took them a certain distance. Our studies are extending those further out into the reaches of the parish in more detail so that we could look for smaller projects. If you remember, those were targeted, those projects were some big projects down by the river. We're looking at smaller, more defined areas further up the basins.
Okay. I just, I think Festemaker's gonna do a great job on this, so excited to see this and look forward to the results. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Wain, Mr. Wainwright, I guess, did the core actually tell us where this hazardous material is in Shoe Peak?
I've not been involved with that end of it. I think there's some meetings scheduled for next week where they're trying to deliver that, and the short answer would have been, I don't think so or no.
Mr. McMurray, no. Did they put it there?
Did they plant it there?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 16 carries. Item 17. Consideration approving the budget committee report dated November 19, 2009. I'm gonna call on Mr. Landry to give us a report. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to choose my words carefully. The item three, we had an administrative presentation of the parish's budget for 2010 or 2010, however you choose to say that, and it was a very good presentation by Mr. Beam, Mr. McMurray. I think all of you should have your budget in front of you. If you don't, we will make sure that you get a copy. There was a number, a number of items or requests from the Gaming Fund. All items on the agenda were approved without objection. I don't think I need to read each one of them again, do I, Mr. President? Unless you wish that I do.
But I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Mr. Bream on the budget committee. Mr. Landry?
Mr. Beam would like to speak.
Mr. Beam?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Landry, I just wanted to briefly mention, in the presentation, we did bring up in 2010 our plans to do some design work at the property purchased. You purchased it near Old Highway 171, boat launch. I just inadvertently left out that was in Mr. Collins' district, and I wanted to just make sure we mentioned that for that area.
Right. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on item 17? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 17 carries. Item 18. Consideration adopting resolution authorizing submittal of the youth council certification by the Workforce Investment Board to the Louisiana Workforce Commission in reference with the composition of the youth council's supplement appointment of members in accordance with the guidelines established by said commission. Need a motion on 18? Go move. Motion by Mr. Seis, second by Ms. Griffin on item 18. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 18 carries. Item 19. Consideration adopting a resolution authorizing the president of the police jury to execute necessary documents for donation of right-of-wages. Logan Postel Perkins Jr., Virginia King-Cruitt, and Frank O'Crutt Jr. for I-10 South Frontage Road in Ward 4. I got a motion by Dr. Mackey and a second by Mr. Fornum on item 19. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 19 carries. Item 20. Consideration of adopting resolution approving the naming of state-maintained roadway located off Goodman Road in Section 26 Township 9, South Range 8, West Ward 3, as Pine Shadows Lane for the purpose of facilitating proper emergency response and other public services. I've got a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Ms. Griffin on item 20. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 20 carries. Item 21. Consideration authorizing the parish purchasing agent to purchase equipment which would provide for infrastructure upgrades and expansion to create a secure Wi-Fi environment for public safety agencies to achieve network access through the Calcasieu Parish Office of Management of Networks, either utilizing state contract purchasing procedures or advertisement for bids of said equipment by the Office of Homeland Security. This equipment is being purchased with a 100% federal grant funding, an amount of $400,000, $400,000 with no local match. I need a motion? Move on 21.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Collins, second by Ms. Griffin on item 21. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 21 carries. Let's see, we're gonna go to the emergency items? I need a motion to suspend item 1. Got a motion by Mr. Fornum to suspend item 1. Second by Mr. Hassan. Item 1 is a consideration or request by Louisiana Pigment LP that the parish consider granting permission for a possible reduction of buffer zone requirement on the east side of company property provided by LAC 337717B3. I have a motion to suspend this. Is there any discussion on the suspension? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss suspending item 1? Any objection? Hearing none. Now, I need a motion on item 1 to... Go move. Got a motion by Mr. Fornum, second by Dr. Mackey to approve item 1. Any discussion? Mr. Landry?
I mean, I would like to know what the reason for it is. I mean, are they gonna...
Mr. Vickers?
Build something or, and actually, what is on that side of their property? Will it affect anything or anybody or...
Well, basically, what has happened is the company wants to dispose of some filter cloth, and they have been working with the Louisiana DEQ in order to do so. The DEQ basically is part of the solid waste regulations, requires a 200-foot buffer around their property. It just so happens, though, that Bayou Den Road joins where this buffer is to some degree, so the roadway is part of the, in the buffer area. And so that's why they're asking us to assist them in granting this waiver. The other thing that I would bring to your attention is, is that I talked to the plant manager today, and the only option, if this is not granted, that they have to dispose of the property. They would have to send this all the way to Washington State in order to do it. It will be placed, let me get the proper, it'll be placed in a reactor, basically, in their CP building, and will be burned at over 1,000 degrees. And so I don't think it'll be any impact to the environment, and please keep in mind, this is not hazardous waste, it's not industrial waste, it's just solid waste.
So I'm sure, I mean, this process or however they're gonna do it has been approved by DEQ and EPA. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be safe?
Well, that's correct. Yes, sir, that they have, they've received the approval of DEQ, but they need, the company needs this waiver from the parish since part of the right-of-way of the road extends into the buffer.
The technicality is holding them up. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any other discussion on item 1? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 1 carries. Before we go to item 2, which is, we went into an executive session, I would like, Ms. Trimmie had asked earlier at a budget meeting to have a personal privilege, so before we go into, go to item 2, I'm gonna give Ms. Trimmie a personal privilege to visit about a matter that she thought was very, very important that she'd like to share with this jury. Ms. Trimmie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I probably went a little bit overboard on the, at the budget committee. I was impassioned, and I just, I know that each one of y'all know that we have some great things ahead of us, and a lot of times, like, for instance, the election on the 14th, that is really more of an opportunity than anything else that we need to look forward to. We need to take the opportunity that the people have given us to maybe make some, some changes and some different things that we can do to let the people of Calcasieu Parish understand, and also for us to understand that, that their feelings are right now. And in the big picture of the United States of America, there are so many areas that are in total distress, and we're fortunate where we are that we are not. So I would just like to take the election of November the 14th and for each one of us to look at it as an opportunity and for us to move forward in that light, and that's how I'd like to say thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Trimmie. All right. With that being said, I need a motion to suspend the rules for item 2 and emergency items. And item 2, I got a motion by Mr. Hassan, second by Mr. Landry. Item 2 is consideration going to executive session to discuss lawsuit number 2006 4758, Hayes versus Johnson versus the police jury. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on us, on the suspending of the rules? Hearing none. Do I have any objection? That vote passes. No objection now.
Move to go into executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Bream to go into executive session, item 2. We now are going into executive session. Thank you.
I'd ask the jurors to get back to their seats. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie to receive report.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion on the report? Hearing none. That carries. An emotion to adjourn?
So move.
A motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Guidry to adjourn. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. We stand adjourned.